Good afternoon, everyone. I will call the Stratford City Council meeting to order. And joining me in the council chamber is City Clerk Tachana Defoe, Chief Administrative Officer Joan Thompson, and Councilor Ritzma is here as well. If Councilor Ritzma is going to speak, he will come to this podium and use it so that we don't have competing microphones within this room. So on the call to order, the second item is declarations of the key interest. And Councilor Ritzma, please come up and he will state his for the record. Thank you. Are there any other members? Councilor Beatty?
Thank your worship, under the addendum item 5.3.
Thank you, the reason, but, oh, I guess you don't need to state the reason. No, okay. Councilor Seven?
Item 7.3, our home is on that list, so I'll declare an interest there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, the adoption of the minutes from the July 20th and the July 27th meeting have been distributed. Would anyone be willing to move them? Councilor Henderson, second or Councilor Burbak, discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried, thank you. Item four is the adoption of the addendum, addenda to this afternoon's meeting, and it has been circulated. Moved by Councilor Gaffney and seconded by Councilor Bunting, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item five is the report of the committee of the holding camera session. And item 5.1, the following matters were considered. First one was industrial land prices policy and real estate commissions policies. And the staff recommendation is that the following amendments to the industrial land prices policy be approved. Land parcels referenced within the existing policy that are no longer available for sale be removed. The option fee section be rescinded. And the role of the Stratford Economic Enterprise Development Corporation in coordinating land sales on behalf of the city be reflected in the policy. And that the industrial land transactions section of real estate commission's policy E13P rescinded. A mover for such? Council Burbak and Councilor Beatty, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried, thank you. Item 5.2, at the August 10th, 2020 session, under municipal Act 2001 is amended. The following amended items were considered. Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communication necessary for that purpose. Advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. A third item that is advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Four, proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local board. And five, labor relations or employee negotiations and personnel matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal employees. At the in-camera session, direction was given on all items. From the addenda, item 5.3, at the August 10th, 2020 session, under the municipal Act 2001, there was a motion to be considered at this session. The council reconsidered the July 27th, 2020 decision with respect to Olone Avenue trunk sanitary sewer extension and the cancellation of the tender T 2020-24 asphalt resurfacing of Olone. So a motion to reconsider. Councilor Ritzma and Councilor Vazalacos. Any discussion? If not, oh, Councilor Henderson?
I was just wondering for the audience out there if we could just explain why?
Well, let's first start with reconsidering, and then we can walk through it as we get to the question on number four. All right. All those in favor of reconsidering? Opposed, if any? Unopposed, that carries. And we'll note that Councilor Beatty did not take part in the discussion. When we go to the next page, there are a series of recommendations with regard to Olone Avenue. And a few weeks ago, council had asked staff to consider front-end loading or asking for front-end agreements from developers to help bring more land to the west of Olone Avenue on for future development. And at this time, council has, through various conversation with our city solicitor, realized that we would have to undertake a new public process with regards to our development charge bylaw and a development charge study. And at this time, council is not prepared to move forward with that process. And we will wait until our next update regularly scheduled of the development charge bylaw. And as such, the following motions are required. And the first is that pursuing front-ending service agreements with interested developers and loan landowners for Olone Avenue trunk sanitary sewer extension be filed. Is there a mover? Council Henderson and seconded by Councilor Vazalacos, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? One opposed. The second is the council approved the award of the asphalt resurfacing 2020 contract to Steve Smith Construction Corporation at a total tender price of $1,875,748.36, including HST. And for a matter of record, it was the low tender on that project. Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Ritzma moving and seconding, discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that carries. The next item that was part of that was that the additional budget of $60,000 from the trails and pedestrian bike master plan for the capital budget, and 340 of that money will come from OSIF funds. And the balance will come from the Public Works Reserve. Now would be a time to pass a bylaw to that effect, which would be 10.6, and that can be read a first and second time. Moved by Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Bunting, discussion? Seeing none, all those, oh, Councilor Henderson, you're to hand up?
I'm a bit late. I meant to ask the question. I believe at the open house, there was issues about when we did the road that, say you live on the west side of Olone and you're crossing to the east side, that there is a way to get across without a ditch being right there? I didn't realize that there's going to be a ditch, then the sidewalk? I'm wondering if the sidewalk or multi-use trail could be first and then the ditch? I don't know if that's been addressed yet or not.
Mr. Delovick, under your department?
Yeah, through your worship. The question was what, there's an existing pathway into the park there? And we were showing the original design without that connection to the road. And so that's been reinstated so that people can access that pathway to the park from the road itself and not have to go through the ditch. The actual multi-use trail will be, there'll be the road, the ditch, and then the multi-use trail. But there'll be some connections there from the road. And then further on to the north, we will be having actual bike lanes that will be on the road itself.
Council Henderson?
Is there a way to actually have the ditch on the other side of the sidewalk? That way, anybody that lives along that whole west end would be able to cross over to the sidewalk on the east side?
Through your worship, no?
Okay. All right.
All right. All those in favor of first and second reading? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Third and final reading is moved by Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Burbak, discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Under item six are hearings of deputations and presentations, and there's none scheduled. Item seven is orders of the day. And item 7.1 is a resolution for post-exemption design by law, 159, 2004, section 4.2. And it is that Bruce Whitaker be heard with regard to this exemption request. Is Mr. Whitaker there, Ms. Defoe? Okay. A motion to hear Mr. Whitaker, Councilor Burbak, and Councilor Beatty. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Mr. Whitaker? If you were there, if you're on mute, if you could come forward at this time? Well, we await for Mr. Whitaker to come forward, and I'll leave it with the clerk to see where that is. We'll move on to item 7.2 at this time. And we can come back to item 7.1. Item 7.2 is various easements for Coventry Phase IV subdivision. And there are a number of recommendations that the corporation of the city of Stratford accept an easement over parts 6, 8, 9 of 44R-5504 from Markor Farms for a temporary overland flow route. That the corporation, the city of Stratford, accept an easement over parts 15, 16, 17, Plan 44R-5504 from Markor Farms for a drainage channel. That the corporation, the city of Stratford, accept an easement over parts 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, Plan 44R-5504 from Markor Farms for future sanitary sewer and road. That the corporation, the city of Stratford, accept an easement over parts 3, 4, 5, 6, and 8 of Plan 44R-5504, and parts 1 and 2 of Plan 44R-5570 from Markor Farms for a temporary road and water main. A mover? Councilor Vazalacos and Councilor Ritzma will second, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried, thank you. Item 7.3 is a resolution from Heritage Stratford regarding addition of non-designated properties for municipal heritage purposes for the registry. And that the staff recommendation is that council direct staff to explore various forums available to host an open house. And that council direct staff to notify the 63 property owners of the Heritage Stratford Resolution and inform them of the upcoming open house. And that staff hold an open house to educate and inform effective property owners in the public on the objectives of including non-designated properties on the municipal heritage register. And that the following, the open house staff board, a final recommended list of properties to be included on the municipal heritage registry as non-designated properties for council's consideration. Councilor Gaffney will move? Seconder, Councilor Vazalacos, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. And the record will show that Councilor Seven did not take part. Item 7.4 is a resolution with regard to a minor variance application for 95 Kelly's Lane. And the staff recommendation is that the owner of 95 Kelly's Lane be permitted to submit a minor variance application to the Committee of Adjustment. Council Clifford and Councilor Bunting, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. And the record will show that Councilor Ritzma did not take part. Item 7.5 is a resolution. It's with regard to a .3-meter reserve access, B12 to B19 and B13 to B19. And the staff recommendation is as follows. That the corporation of the city of Stratford authorize the city to enter into an access agreement with the owner to allow the owner to use .3 meters reserve block of Plan 141 on draft M plan to access Part 3 on the draft 44R plan for works relating to the development of the draft-approved lands. This access agreement will not be entered into until deed is stamped for consent application, B12-19. And the .3 meter reserve on Block 141 on the draft M plan is conveyed to the city. And that the corporation, the city of Stratford, authorize the city to enter into an access agreement with the owner to allow the owner to use .3-meter block, 142 on draft M plan to access Part 4 on the draft 44R plan. This relating to the development of the draft-approved lands. This access agreement will not be entered into until the deed is stamped and conveyed, application B13-19. And the .3 meter reserve on Block 142 on the draft M plan is conveyed to the city. And finally, that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to execute the access agreements on behalf of the corporation of the city of Stratford. A mover? Council Henderson, second or Councilor Burbak, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Item 7.6 is a resolution, housing and homelessness plan for Stratford, Perth County, and St. Mary's. And it's the five-year update for the plan from 2020 to 2024. And the staff recommendation is that the plan for Stratford, Perth County, and St. Mary's five-year update be endorsed by council. Council Ritzma moving, Council Burbak seconding. Council Henderson and Councilor Vazalacos.
Yes, I would just like to encourage people to read the report. On page 69, the 2020 to 2024 strategic objectives are there. So first one is ending homelessness, creating attainable housing options, sustaining community housing, addressing a diversity of needs. And then the different drivers are there. And it's a very good report, and I'm hoping people will take the time to read it. Thank you. And thanks to staff for all their work on this.
Council Vazalacos?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank staff for, it's a comprehensive update to the plan. And there's a lot of really good information there. I think there's just, I just, I only had a chance to review this after we saw it the first time last night. And I think there's a typo on page 17 where it says, "At risk of homelessness." I think it refers to people who are not homeless, but whose current economic and or housing situation is precarious or does not meet public health and safety standards. I just, I'm wondering if that is a typo in the description of it, just in case it goes out, there's a chance to revise it.
Ms. McRory, are you there?
Through your worship, yes, I will take a look at that and address it if it's concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing further? It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item 7.7 is an agreement for licensed detachment with Festival Hydro. And that the agreement for licensed detachment between the corporation, the city of Stratford, and Festival Hydro Services Inc., Ryzong Networks, be approved. And that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement. Council Gaffney and Council Bunting, discussion? Councilor Beatty, did you have a question? No? Seeing no hands, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item 7.8 is alcohol policy amendment at Almond Arena seating area. And that council approve, staff recommendations, council approve a revision to the municipal alcohol policy. Section 3.1, areas designated for conditional use of alcohol to include seating area around the ice of the William Memorial Arena. Council Ritzma? Move, second or Councilor Bunting, discussion? Councilor Vazalacos and Henderson?
Yeah, I'm not opposed to this resolution. I just, I recall that the Almond Arena had some accessibility issues in terms of handrails on some of the access to some of the seating. Is that, can that be problematic with the alcohol policy? Or? I know there was some iota stuff associated with it.
Mr. St. Louis?
Through your worship, we have compared this change in alcohol policy with other arenas. And most of them don't have rails. And we don't see this as an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Council Henderson?
I was just curious how this works. So currently, they can buy alcohol in the lounge area. So do they go and buy and then carry it back to the seats? Or is somebody actually outselling it in the seats?
Mr. St. Louis?
Yeah, through your worship, it will be purchased in one central area and then carried back to their scene.
Okay.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? That's carried, thank you. Item 7.9 is a resolution, consumption of liquor in Alfresco dining locations for 2020. And the staff recommendation is that a bylaw authorizing consumption of liquor in Alfresco locations, specifically Market Square and Tom Patterson Island, from August 11th, 2020 to August 31st, 2020, be adopted. Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Burbak, discussion? Councilor Seven?
I just had, I was just wondering if we consulted with the police services at all regarding this? It just seems like sort of unrealistic to enforce based on all the requirements and the timeframes and things like that. I just wanted to know if we had had any information from them or feedback?
Mr. St. Louis is chair of the city initiatives team. Do you have a comment on it, or Mr. Defoe? Which one would be best?
Through your worship, we have a inspector sit, I'll sit on our committee. And in the report, you will see that it's going to be managed by the Parks Patrol until they're finished.
Okay. Council Clifford?
Yeah, I was going to ask, is it alcohol that's pot at a restaurant? Or is it your own alcohol you bring?
Mr. St. Louis?
Yeah, through your worship, it's alcohol that's purchased from a restaurant and moved into the areas, the designated areas for this alcohol consumption. And it is not for personal alcohol.
It'll be labeled as such, correct, Mr. St. Louis?
That's correct. It will have a sticker on the alcohol, designating where it came from.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Sure. We'll go back to item 7.1, I believe. Mr. Whitaker, you're there? Mr. Whitaker?
Okay, I think you can hear me now, Dan. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Bruce, you have two.
Okay, there, can you hear me now, Dan?
Yes.
Hello? Oh, good. I was on both of the, we tried the computer and the telephone. So I think you got me a few times.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. Wonderful. Thanks, everybody, for inviting me to this, this meeting. I've taken over the building on the corner of Huron and Erie Street, the old family and company building. And we're turning it into, essentially on the Ontario Street floor, there's going to be a hotel lobby bar, and then five hotel rooms, and then a commercial spot. And then on New York Street, there's going to be event space, Gregory Connors'. And then there'll also be a commercial spot that we haven't rented yet. And then on the second and third floor, there's eight long-term apartments that have, that are all fully rented. And what we're trying to do with the signage, the signage will be on the west side. And that will be the entrance into the hotel, the only entrance into the hotel. And we wanted to do sort of a canopy there. And we didn't want it to be, I guess, garish. We want it to be very clean and simple. So I saw the sign at the Avon Theater, and I sort of wanted to replicate that. And one of the main reasons is, is we want it on the canopy as opposed to being on the brick. And we talked to the heritage about that. And they preferred that so that we don't take away from the integrity of the brick. And we just keep it looking very clean, because that's, that's essentially the entrance into the downtown core. So we're very aware of that. And we want to keep, make sure that the entrance is, is clean and has a very good look to it. So they won't have, they won't be large. It won't be like Groove, which is on Ontario Street that, right beside us. It'll be very much the same font to then everything as they have on theater as they have it on their canopy. So I guess the main reason is, we don't want to have too much signage when you appear into downtown. We want to keep it nice and clean and simple. And we prefer not to put it on, on the brick, because the heritage, you know, prefer us not to. And I think it's a much cleaner look not to have it on the brick. So it'd just be above the canopy. So when the people enter in, it will be above that. So essentially, it protects them from the rain and the elements. And that's, that's essentially the, what I'm looking to get approval for.
There is a staff recommendation at the bottom of page four that the request by Mr. Whitaker for a signed bylaw exemption in order to erect a marquee sign measuring .89 meters squared or 9.6 feet squared at 4 Ontario Street be approved. Council Ritzma is moving and Council Burbak seconding, discussion? All those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate that.
Item 710 is resolution, review of parking amidst COVID-19. And the staff recommendation is that direction be given on any additional parking measures, incentives to be offered. And that the direction be given on the provision of meter hoods in the downtown core for the businesses. So I open this up to council. If we have some thoughts, on August 30th, the free parking expires. It is scheduled to expire on August 30th. It's a Sunday. That coincides with the start of a new work week. And if we were going to be bringing back bylaw enforcement parking staff, that that would coincide with the start of a work week. And if council has any other thoughts on that at this time, we ask that they provide them. Council Ingram?
Thank you. I would move that we reinstate our, our regular parking fees as well as parking enforcement as of September the first. And that the meter hoods continue to be provided for restaurants, one meter hood per restaurant for takeout purposes only. And that all retail meter hoods return to our, our regular pay per use.
Okay. Council Ingram, would you mind making it August 30th so it coincides with the Monday?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Seconder for that, Council Beatty, and then discussion? Council Seven?
Yeah, I, I'm opposed to the motion on the floor. I think we should at least, I saw there was an option for two-hour free parking as opposed to four. I think we should continue the new status quo, because quite frankly, the status quo isn't changing. And a lot of businesses, they're not going to benefit from people having to pay for parking. And then certainly, it's just, I mean, parking is down significantly as it is. So I don't think, I think the projected revenue would be much less than it would be normally anyway. And we're going to have to pay staff to, to do that. So I don't think, I don't think it's worth potentially risking a business to the downtown, because I mean, I think they just, they, they just can't, you know. We can't afford to add any hurdles whatsoever to the downtown, in my opinion. So I, I think we should continue the parking as it is for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Anything further? Council Burbak, then Council Henderson?
Yeah, I actually agree with Councilor Seven. I, I would be in favor of going with extending it until October 31st, which is, coincides with the patios. So to encourage people to continue patio use into the fall. I think having free parking is really an added incentive for local people to, to come down and, and support local businesses.
Thank you. Council Henderson, and Council Clifford?
Council Seven mentioned about the two-hour parking. That motion isn't changing what we have right now, the four-hour? Just want to clarify that. Because I think that'd be way too confusing to say we're going to two-hour parking.
It's, it's not intended to change, so that would be different. Okay? Council Clifford, then Council Ingram?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I support the motion on the floor. We have free parking at Cooper site. So if anyone, they want free parking, small walk, but I, like, for the income that we're, that's been dropped, I think it is time to start charging for parking.
Thank you. Council Ingram?
Thank you. And just to be clear, my motion is in line with the recommendations from the city center BIA as well. And they are finding that a lot of the parking spaces are being taken up longer term, so longer than the four free hours that are pre-provided. And the higher turnover spots are being utilized much more regularly. And people aren't able to get access to them. There's a lot of employees that are taking up the, the free parking, which under our, our general regular pre-COVID standards, they would be parking at the Cooper site, or they would be parking in alternative spots and then walking. So this would actually return us to some of the, the standards that we've had pre-COVID.
Thank you. Mr. Foe is the clerk. Come on forward, please.
Through your worship, I would just like to receive some clarification that the meter hood rental provision for restaurants would be specific to those without current patio extension program.
Is that correct? That your intent, intention, Counsel Ingram?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the seconder, that was your intention as well? Thank you. Okay. All right. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's two opposed, and that's carried. Thank you. Item 711 is a resolution for holding council meetings, proxy voting in COVID-19. The staff recommendation is that subcommittee meetings resume in person in council chambers effective September 2020. And that direction be given on holding the council committee and advisory committee for the remainder of 2020. And that procedural bylaw 140-2007 be amended to include provisions permitting the holding of electronic meetings. And for council and advisory committees and for members participating electronically to be counted towards quorum in order to ensure municipal decision making is not effective. And that notice requirements for amendments of procedural bylaw as set out in notice policy C310 be suspended. And that a follow-up report be prepared outlining a system for proxy voting in the city. So if we return to subcommittee meetings in person in September, that is a smaller number of people. If we go with a full council in person, we do have to be mindful of members of the public attending, and I believe we're still limited to 50 people. And we, we would have to look at a new venue, as the council chamber would not allow us to social distance with those people. So with that number of people. So if we could, if we were to continue on in this format for a while to see if we go to a larger group, or would we like to direct staff to start looking at alternative locations? Counsel Henderson.
Well, I do have a question. Like, my understanding is, it's 50 per building, so by the time we count all staff, would we even be able to do that? Or are we able to get something special in writing that we could have 50 in that room? Because, okay, so subcommittees are five plus staff, plus anybody from the community that are residents that wants to come to the meeting. So I'm not sure how we would handle that. I guess I just think that until things are things are really calming down, but we want to see what's going to happen in the rest of August with, you know, we've got tourists coming to town now. We want to make sure we keep our stats low, that the subcommittee meetings could meet, like we are, like through Zoom meetings, and then there's no need to worry about getting too many people in the building, et cetera. Just, just my two cents. I'm just wondering. I guess my main question is, is 50 includes staff, so you have to count everybody that's in the building?
Present, it does include. It does not include, sorry, it does not include staff. I see your hand, Counsel Gaffney. It does not include staff that are in the building working.
But doesn't it have to?
No.
Per building?
No, the, the interpretation that staff are working on is through discussions with the health unit. So that's why I'm asking that if we want to look at it, we should refer it to staff, so that we can work with the health unit to ensure that any solution we come forward with represents an understanding between both agencies. Okay. Counsel Clifford, Seven, Gaffney, Vazalaco, Speedy, Bunting.
I, I'm okay, actually. I didn't have my hand.
Okay. Counsel Seven.
I would, I, I would like to defer this for another month or so. I, I don't know. I, I'll wait to make the motion until everyone has a chance to speak, but I'd like to make a deferral motion. Just, I mean, you know, there's an article today. I think there's been eight new cases in here on birth over the weekend, and I, I'm worried that if we go through all this effort to to go back to the way things were, or, or anything like that, then we're just going to have to move back to this anyway, depending on how things go. So I would like to see us kind of a wait-and-see approach, just for a little bit longer. That's my thoughts.
Okay. And I will come to you after everyone spoke for the chance to make a deferral. Counsel Gaffney, Vazalaco, Speedy, and Bunting.
Well, your worship, I was going to make a motion that we continue with the way we are doing things now, because I agree with what Counsel Seven is saying, that with, with more activity becomes the possibility of more cases. And if we can avoid being in the middle of that, I think it'd be good. And and we ask staff to look at a way of incorporating subcommittees moving forward to do in a Zoom fashion also.
Thank you. Counsel Vazalaco, Speedy, and Bunting.
So my understanding is, is that we would change our procedural bylaw, which would allow us to continue to do electronic meetings as needed. But I think we do need to have a plan in place for when we go back to in-person, whether that's September, October, or whenever we feel ready to do so. I think I don't think deferring, deferring the format is appropriate. I think we can defer the decision on what date we come back. But I do think we need to give direction to staff that, you know, we will need to come up with a plan for in-person meetings. We will have to go back to in-person meetings. And the sooner we have a plan on, on what that's going to look like, the sooner it can be ready for implementation, and then we can make that decision as needed. And my preference would be that we would use the auditorium. And the reason why I think the auditorium is, is the likelihood that we're going to be renting out the auditorium for its usual uses is quite low at this point. Whereas the Rotary Complex, I can see where community uses could be applied to that if we get the exemption in a, it, through the province to allow individual doors. So even if we defer the decision on what date we come back, I think giving direction to staff to prepare for coming back for council meetings in the auditorium would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you. I see your hand, Counsel Ingram. I have Counsel Beatty, Bunting, and then Ingram.
Thank you, your worship. I too support Counsel Gaffney's thoughts that continuing in the Zoom fashion is appropriate for that, the reasons he's mentioned. Also with that, the subcommittee looking at ways to do it through Zoom function. So if his motion was brought forward, I would second that. So speaking to those two motions, or those two, two thoughts, I, I would support those.
We have nothing on the floor. I'll frame something. Counsel Seven is at the front of the line to make the motion. So Counselor Bunting, and then Ingram.
Yes, as much as I enjoy the company of everybody who's here, I'm firmly in favor of continuing the Zoom meetings as we have them at the moment, until such times that it is safe to do otherwise. What we're doing, we're getting the job done. It's been efficient. It's been a lot better than I ever thought it would be. And I think we should go ahead, and, and I, I would back Counsel Gaffney's situation. With regards to the subcommittees, I, I get the, the concept of meeting small numbers and so on and so forth. I can think of perhaps even the finance subcommittee might be a, a, a good, I guess, test run to, to see how subcommittees might run, and then other subcommittees might be able to follow suit. But there's nothing wrong with the subcommittee meetings being held by Zoom too, as well, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Counsel Ingram.
Thank you. I, I am actually balanced between both options. I, I can meet in person or, or continue Zoom. So I, I don't have a a personal preference that way. I do agree with Counsel Vazalaco that we do need to come up with a plan. So moving forward with some sort of plan to implement in-person meetings would be beneficial right now, because we're being proactive as opposed to reactive whenever we determine that the time is right. The one concern I do have with City Hall is the washroom situation. And that's, you know, that's made a little bit easier at the rec complex. So yes, we may have community groups that are renting that out. But we also have a, a greater number of washrooms available to be able to be used than we do within City Hall. And that's, that's one concern that I have. I think washroom availability is, is a big issue. Once you get all of us plus staff, plus members of the public, and you want to be able to physical distance as you're in a washroom. The, the other piece that we need to consider is the cost that was provided in the report. And I think the rec complex provided less opportunity for cost savings than, than perhaps what City Hall was. But again, you have greater space, you have greater washroom capacity. And, and I think any option that we choose has a safety factor already in play, because we have the physical distancing plan for all of these particular spaces that we're considering. So if, if the wish of council is to continue with Zoom, I'm fine with that. I just, I think being proactive and putting that plan in place, and then considering the washroom capacity is another issue.
Counsel Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I would be comfortable either way, meeting in person or with Zoom. But one thing we do need to consider is the fact that the public can't really participate, and especially at the subcommittee level. It would be, I mean, they can participate, but it's, it's quite difficult in the Zoom setup. So the in-person setup is much easier for people to come and be able to speak, and, and members of the public to, to attend the meetings. So that would be consideration as well. Like, I would think we could possibly go ahead with the subcommittee meetings in person and continue with council meetings on Zoom as sort of a compromise. And I do like the idea of that Counsel Vazalaco said of, of at least making a plan and deciding which of these options that's, it's going to work for us. The other thing is, in the, in City Hall, if we are limited to 50 people, there should be enough washroom capacity to limit it to one person at a time kind of idea. But I, that would be for staff to work out.
Right. If I could, Counsel Seven has, has asked to make a motion. I, I think there's a hybrid here, and I'll just say my thoughts on it, and then I'll leave it to him to make his motion. But I think if we were to stay with Zoom till the end of September for, for all meetings, and we look at a plan for Zoom for a subcommittee or in-person meetings for that, and direct staff to look at various locations for consideration of having council as a whole in one room, and that it be approved by public health and reported back for us to make a decision, we could consider it in September. That'll allow us some time to get through the next few weeks, staff to meet with the health unit, develop a strategy and report back. And that would give us another chance to look at this. But those are just my thoughts. Counsel Seven, you had your hand.
Thank you. I, yeah, I'm just going to leave, leave the floor open, but I appreciate everybody's thoughts, so I'll just wait and see sort of.
Counsel Vazalaco.
I'll move, I'll move his worship's motion, that we go ahead with that.
Okay. And I'll give it to the clerk again. She's looking at me, and that's, that's subcommittee and council meet, or council meetings consider, can continue by Zoom till at least the end of September. That's subcommittee meetings resume in September by Zoom. And then staff work with public health to develop a strategy and plan for in-person meetings resuming as early as October and subject to council's final approval. Seconded by Counsel Seven. Is there a discussion to that? Counsel Vazalaco.
I'm just, I just wanted to follow up with, yes, there were eight cases over the weekend, but we realized that we are, we're, we are dealing with an outbreak in an isolated population within Ford County. And I think also, one of the things that we have to understand is, is we are asking our employees to come back to work and work in person and interact with the public. We, there's a lot of expectations we have of people coming back to work in person. Our case positivity rate is, is still quite low. So we do have to consider the fact that, I, I completely agree that we can go into September, but we are going to have to meet back in person if we're expecting employees to do the same.
All right. Counsel Henderson.
My thoughts on this are if we're saying we're going to come back and meet, and the motion is pretty open right now, that it's still going to come back to us for approval. I'm assuming part of that motion is that if there's a, a change in stats and problems and that, that we can still change that. I'm assuming that's just part of.
They'll develop a plan, and like anything, they can bring a recommendation to council. And we can choose to move forward, amend it, change it, whatever, but they'll at least have a strategy and a chance to, to work with the health unit. Counsel Ingram, then Counsel Seven.
And with the resumption of subcommittee meetings, will we be returning to our regular start time for meetings then as well?
I think we'll leave that to staff, just to, to figure out how that's going to work. But one of the challenges with the amount of technology using right now, and the number of people deployed at home, this helps IT be able to manage any challenges we have. But we can talk about that in the, in the draft plan that comes back. Counsel Seven.
Thanks. I just wanted to say I agree with Counsel Vazalaco about the expectation that if staff are returning, that we also would. I guess my, my point from the, my first comment was that I didn't want to see us putting the time and effort and resources into, into a new plan if it was too early. But I do agree with Counsel Vazalaco on that.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Counsel Vazalaco has moved, and it's been seconded. Correct, Ms. Clerk? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you. Item 712 is a proclamation that City of Stratford proclaims October 22, 2020, as childcare worker and early education, childhood educator appreciation day. And that in the City of Stratford, in recognition of the education, dedication, and commitment of childcare workers to children, their families, and the quality of life in our community. A mover is Counsel Vazalaco, and Counsel Burbak. Discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Item 713 is the 2019 Lottery License Activity Report. And the staff recommendation is that that report be received. Counsel Beatty and Counsel Bunting. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. 714 is COVID-19 Stage 3 update, and that the CAO's report dated August 5th, titled COVID-19 Stage 3 Update, be received. Counsel Gaffney and Counsel Burbak. Discussion? Seeing none, but I'm just going to thank Ms. Thompson for her work, and that of the corporate leadership team and all the staff for their efforts. So thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item 715, Stratford Lion's Pool Operations Midseason Update, and the recommendation is that the midseason update be received. Counsel Ingram and Counsel Burbak. Discussion? Counsel Ingram.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we knew how many open spaces have been remaining in this schedule for, for the pool since we opened it?
Mr. St. Louis, or Brad, Mr. Herndon?
Sure. Through your worship. There are, for the length swing program, those have all been filled since the start, for the most part, July the 10th. There are some open spaces when it comes to the aquapod swimming, which are the private areas of the pool where families up to 10, within their social bubbles can, can swim together. For the most part, we have very good capacities and people attending the pool, especially in our family swims, which are open swims up to a maximum of 45 persons per swim.
Anything further?
No, that's perfect. Thank you.
Counsel Henderson, you had your hand, and then Counsel Gaffney.
I was just wondering, did we find we had to, or maybe we don't know this, but do we have to turn a lot of people away?
Through your worship, we're not finding that there is an overabundance of. Through your worship, uh we're not finding that there is an overabundance of uh of people coming to our open family swims. So I think we've hit the nail on the head with respect to that forty-five person maximum. We do have free swim, family swim Fridays. That's a tongue twister, I know. Um that is sponsored by an anonymous donor. Uh those tend to see more patrons coming to the pool, but we're still able to um uh control the public avenues outside of the pool. So all in all, I think the swim program that's being delivered, which is a combination of reservable swims and open swimming has has been working out actually quite well with without with few people uh waiting to get in.
Thanks for all your work on this.
My pleasure.
Counselor Gaffney.
Uh thank you, Worship. Through you, Your Worship, uh Mr. Herndon, do you see uh any value or need for the Lions Pool to be open after uh on Labor Day? Or will we be at the end of our usable season by the end staff availability and so on and so forth?
Uh certainly, it it may make sense to continue the season into the first week of September while students are not yet back at school. It's hard to say, though, after students are back in school, uh what the participation levels will be. Certainly, length swimmings, which are mostly attended by adults, are very well attended and have been well attended all summer long. That could continue to be popular into September whether permitting, but I think uh it will be a student participation with their families that would be the big question mark at this point. So i- if anything, if you if there's an appetite to continue the operation into September, I would say for the first week in September. Certainly, we have staff that could support that. Um but after that, I wouldn't uh I wouldn't be sure.
Just a quick follow-up, Your Worship. Uh when I uh like your staff is mainly college and university students and they quite possibly go and be going back to school after Labor Day and so that's that's sort of what I was wondering. You can have staff available.
We have polled all of our current staff members and uh we are confident that we would have enough staff members to continue to postseason program into at least the first week of September, if not the second.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? All right, all those in favor of the motion? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Thank you. Item seven sixteen is a resolution with regard to the reopening of arenas in the Birdside Agriplex and the staff recommendations that staff proceed with the reopening of the Stratford Rotary Complex for public use as of Monday, August seventeenth. That staff begin to prepare one ice pad at Rotary Complex, August twenty-fourth, for rentals beginning September eighth. That staff proceed with reopening of the Stratford Agriplex for regular programming, including Stratford Lakeside Active Adults Association Bingo as of August twenty-fourth. And that staff proceed to reopening the remaining arenas as needed based on ice booking requests no later than September eighth. Counselor Henderson and Counselor Ritzma, discussion. Counselor Henderson.
Um I'm just wondering, with the section on SLAW, are we gonna get into issues where there's gonna be more than fifty people? I just, you know, I'm just wondering how we're gonna handle that. I know it's usually first come, first served, but.
Mr. Herndon will work with them to develop a reservation system similar to what they have, so they know how many people are in the building for any given time.
Okay.
Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item eight is business for which previous notice has been given and there's none scheduled. Or sorry, uh except one, uh Community Safety and Well-being Plan Update. And that's that the Director of Social Services will provide an update on the Community Safety and Well-being Plan uh as well as the community survey that began on July thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And Ms. McWhorter, you're there to do that?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Uh the Community Safety and Well-being Plan for Stratford-St. Mary's North Perth, West Perth, Perth East and South Perth Community Survey was launched July thirtieth and it will remain open until September eleventh. Citizens are being asked to participate by sharing their perspectives and experiences regarding community safety and well-being through this online survey. I am asking today that City Council encourage our citizens to engage in completing this survey so we have a broad perspective of our community needs. So the community members, government, local agencies, and stakeholders can work together to sustain and improve the overall quality of life for our residents. If there is a barrier to completing this survey online, citizens can complete the survey by telephone or receive a hard copy of the survey by calling five one nine two seven one three seven seven three, extension two three one. And as of this morning, we have had four hundred and seventy-two responses throughout the county. So thank you.
Thank you. Right. Further on that, item nine is notice of intent and there's none scheduled. It is time for the reading of the bylaws. There are a number of bylaws uh through ten, one through ten, four. Ten-one is an agreement for licensed detachment with Festival Hydro Services. Bylaw ten-two is acceptance of temporary easements from Markor Farms. Ten-three is access agreements with the Northwest Stratford Development, Inc. And bylaw ten-four is consumption of liquor in al fresco dining locations and they can be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. Counselor Vasilakos and Counselor Burbak moving to be taken collectively. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. First and second reading is Counselor Henderson. Sure, you have a question?
Sorry, I have a question. Um do, I can't remember. The paving of Lauren Ave- or Lona, is that a bylaw or is that just?
It was a bylaw. We passed it when we dealt with the item on page three.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I wasn't sure if it came back here again.
No problem. And you'll still move first and second reading? Thank you. Counselor Clifford will second for bylaws ten, one through ten, four. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Third and final reading is Counselor Seven and Counselor Gaffney for bylaws ten, one, ten, two, ten, three, and ten, four. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Item eleven is the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to bring forward? Counselor Burbak and then Counselor Vasilakos.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to bring forward the um resolution from the City of Owen Sound uh to support Private Members Bill B or M thirty-six for Emancipation Day. I'd like us to endorse that.
Thank you. You would like to refer it to staff? Is that what you said?
Uh I I think they were requesting an endorsement.
Okay, so moving endorsement of that bylaw or that uh request and seconded by Counselor Vasilakos. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Counselor Vasilakos, you had your hand up.
Hey, Madam.
Thank you. There's nothing else, any new business this afternoon? Seeing none, we'll take an adjournment to go right into the Standing Committee for Planning and Heritage. Moved. Counselor Burbak, Counselor Ingram, all those in favor? And that's carried. I'll turn it over to Counselor Ritzma.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to call the Planning and Heritage Committee to order. Uh item two, disclosures of key area interests. Any to disclose? Seeing none. Item three, delegations. We have none scheduled. Item four, report of the Director of Infrastructure and Development Services. Four point one is the resolution with regards to planning report. August the tenth, twenty-twenty, council meeting zone change application Z zero one dash two zero referring to the address of six seventy-seven Erie Street. And I'd like to invite Ms. Bossy forward to uh give a staff update.
Thank you, Chair. So a copy of the slides that I'm going to be presenting verbally are begin on page twenty of the Planning and Heritage Meeting Agenda. So the purpose of this meeting is to consider the planning application submitted for the west portion of six seventy-seven Erie Street change the current I-two dash thirty-two zoning by adding an Eden restaurant with maximum floor area of two hundred and twenty-three meters squared to apply a minimum parking rate of one parking space per automatic drive-through car wash and to state that the parking rate for an Eden restaurant is one per four-person seating capacity. And the public meeting was held on this application on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty. The subject lands are located on the southeast corner of Erie Street and Lorne Avenue East and are currently vacant. Um so page twenty-three of the agenda shows the concept plan that was submitted with the application. And in two thousand and nineteen, the portion of six seventy-seven Erie Street subject to this application was rezoned from an I-two dash nine zone to allow, in addition to the existing permitted uses, a gas bar and neighborhood and a neighborhood store with a maximum floor area of three hundred meters squared. And there were no public comments received on this application. So the subject lands um are designated industrial area in the official plan. And then industrial area permits a range of uses. Accessory uses are permitted, which provides services for employees or increase the attractiveness of industrial areas to industry, provided that neighboring areas designated for commercial purposes are not capable of providing the desired level of service to industry industrial areas. Such uses are encouraged to develop in groups to form small head stores, personal care establishments and restaurants. And the subject plans are located in an area of commercial uses that function as a commercial corridor. And so although there are other Eden restaurants on Erie Street, the site would also serve the immediate surrounding industrial area employees and would not detract from the existing commercial areas and would be in keeping with the overall uses of the area. So there was a traffic impact study completed for the lands, but it did not include the consideration for a restaurant drive-through in the site. So the Engineering Division is advised to support adding a restaurant drive-through and updated traffic impact study would be required. So as the staff are recommending that a holding provision be applied that would prohibit the included inclusion of a restaurant drive-through until such time that an updated traffic impact study is submitted and approved by the city. So the the lands are um zoned I-two dash thirty-two and they permit a range of uses. And as demonstrated by the concept plan, the lands are adequately sized to accommodate the Eden restaurant and associated parking. And the addition of an Eden restaurant to a maximum gross gross floor area of two hundred and twenty-three meters squared will not negatively impact the surrounding lands and the uses compatible with the existing adjacent uses. So the applicant has requested that the existing parking requirement of one space per four-person seating capacity for the Eden restaurant be included with the site-specific zoning. So since the city is in the process of undertaking a citywide comprehensive zoning bylaw update that has a different rate for an Eden restaurant, the owners want to have certainty moving forward which rate will apply as they are unsure of the timing of their site plan approval in relation to the approval of the draft zoning bylaw. And if the rate were to change while they were working through the site plan process, it would require considerable considerable redesign of the site. And the applicant has requested to apply uh one parking space for an automatic drive-through car wash. And in addition to the one parking space required for the car wash, the draft zoning bylaw requires twelve stacking spaces. So staff don't have an issue with the one parking space for the drive-through car wash, but would also like to see the requirement for stacking lanes and spaces just to make sure that um the drive-through won't impact the overall traffic flow of the site. And the staff recommendation is that the application, oh yes, so we received no public input and the applicant has seen the draft bylaw and they have no objection. And the their recommendation from staff is that the lands are rezoned to a general industrial special with the holding provision to permit in addition to the existing permitted uses, the Eden restaurant to the gross floor area of two hundred and twenty-three meters squared to state that the required parking spaces for the Eden restaurant is one per four-person seating capacity to apply a rate of one parking space for the automatic drive-through car wash and to require a minimum of twelve stacking spaces for the drive-through and to apply a holding provision to prohibit the restaurant drive-through until a traffic impact study has been submitted and approved to the satisfaction of the city. And the reasons are that public interest was considered. The applicant application is consistent with the provincial policy statement and official plan. It facilitates development that is compatible with surrounding lands and that is appropriate for the lands. And it's considered to be sound use, land use planning, and the application encourages efficient use of land and infrastructure. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Questions, but Counselor Henderson.
Yes, when I try to enlarge the picture, it's kind of blurry. I'm just trying to figure out, is there any accessible spots there? Special parking spots?
Through the chair, there will be accessible parking spaces. Um it will depend on what the overall requirement is for the site. And they'll be required to provide those and demonstrate that they're there through the site plan process.
Yeah, I'm just thinking like if they're only having one parking spot, it might be a smart idea to make that accessible, then it accommodates everybody.
So through the chair, it'll be the required accessible parking spaces will be based on the total number required for the site. So they're proposing the gas bar, the drive-through car wash, as well as the Eden restaurant and the neighborhood store. So the they will have accessible parking on site.
Any other questions? Counselor Gaffney.
Move the staff recommendation, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, a seconder for that recommendation. Thank you, Counselor Beatty. So that's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Bossy, for that thorough update. I'll call the question. All in favor? And that is unanimous. And I believe the last item then is the adjournment, a motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Vasilakos, seconded by Counselor Clifford. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ritzma. Council now reconvene. Are there any declarations of key or interest in the general nature thereof that were declared at the Standing Committee? Seeing none in Standing Committee. Item four-two, fourteen-two then is just the reading of the bylaw and it's the confirmatory bylaw for this afternoon's meeting. It can be read a first and second time and it's bylaw ten point five. Counselor Henderson and Bunting, discussion. If not, all those in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. The third and final reading is Counselor Gaffney and Counselor Burbak. All those in favor? And that's carried. And then a motion to adjourn this afternoon's council meeting. Counselor Seven and Counselor Ingram, all those in favor? And that's carried. Thanks so much, everyone.